And Michael. And Michael, if he joins, we will gladly welcome him. So let's see, I am, here we go. I'm just gonna pull up. The agenda, where did I do with that? Well, first, I guess, before I pull up the agenda, I don't know, I mean, I have the agenda. You all should have it. So I'm calling the meeting to order.
I could not pull it up.
You couldn't pull it up?
The agenda, but I'm just gonna go with the flow with whatever it is.
Okay, it's pretty basic. We have, you know, general call to order. And I don't know who was taking minutes, I'll just sort of take some minutes here as I'm. Typing forty-six and we have. Us, we have public comment, I don't, we don't have anyone publicly. Joining and then really it was. I had old business. Which is to review our, our action plan and then we have new business just to talk about the summer. And then different reports, Nancy isn't gonna be here, so. We'll just, I don't know, I guess just move into, I'll see if I can share this. Quarterly. Michael had sent it to me. Let's see. Give me a minute, okay, there it is, Excel.
I know Michael had sent me an email checking in, I think in our last meeting, we talked about potentially. Something to bring all have documents together under potential like a man or two emails and a shared drive. Definitely still working on that, it fell off the radar for a little bit, but. We're just, I think we're needing to really check in with legal in terms of. Communication, that communications clause for like open meetings law.
Oh, okay.
You're not winning with legal and kind of develop some parameters around that potentially. Then I think that we can move forward with something like that.
Okay. That would be good. Alright, I was trying to share and I don't think you guys, can you guys see?
Yeah, we can see.
The Excel spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Way to go, okay.
I was.
You could?
Oh, it's back.
Okay. I don't know why, let's see. It like sits funny here, okay. Like I can't really see it without seeing you guys, but maybe that doesn't matter. Well, I guess as long as you guys can see it. So can you see it? Let's see if I'm like typing on it if you can see.
Yeah, we can see it if you're typing.
You saw a bunch of what?
It just says nine or G G G.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so we're on the same, we're on the same page, so thank you. Alright, so what, what I wanted to do is. Ask, because again, I know I've, I missed last time we met and I, who knows, I might have missed the month before, but. Did we? I thought we also developed a. Like a quarterly update template. Did we not? Does anyone remember that? Like that was a meeting that we had when we were. In person. And Michael and Aaliyah were like presenting it. And I felt like we had a different one where we had different people's names attached to it.
Yeah, I think you're right. But I thought that only went through. The first two quarters.
Okay, and I wanted to go through that one because I don't think we had to sort of see where we are.
Yeah, I think that was.
This, maybe this, we can just go through this and sort of see where we are.
I just think that, like, if anyone has anything new to report, that would be great, but like without. Michael and Aaliyah and they're the authors of this, it's gonna be really difficult.
I know, so I thought, well, some of them like.
But I did see my name down there repeatedly.
I know, well, it was me. It was me sort of putting a couple things, I thought, well, you know. So that's why, because it says develop full plan for. Q two to Q four, and I thought we had done that because I remember a lot of.
Yeah.
Q one had like my name on it and then I know like Crystal, I think there were.
Yeah, I think I was supposed to do like Q quarter two.
Yes, and so that's like the bummer that I can't, and I had asked Michael. You know, to send me it and this is what he sent, so that's why I thought, well, maybe we can at least. Look at where we are based on this. And. You know, see what, see what we wanna. Try to focus on and I don't know, maybe I'm jumping into like new business. And wanting to ask about the summer. And I know like. I know Aaliyah. Is not in the state and she is. Her, her, well, I don't know, did tell them, she, she's not in the state and we just. Were thinking of taking off the summer. And I was gonna say, if there's things that people could be doing still, we just wouldn't be having like a regular meeting.
Yeah, I feel like that's a. Good plan. I, some of the questions that I have are. We had that meeting where we went and listened to. I can't think of his name, the guy talk at the Kiwanis meeting back in March or April. And then I know that, like, I didn't get to go to the one where Jill presented, I was kind of hoping to hear like. If that was helpful and kind of what, what happened with that one.
Yeah, and I have some, some updates, I mean, not really updates, but. Some things that maybe we could talk about, I don't know, Ethan, you were. I think you were, I think I added you on those emails and I'm like, I'm not sure like how like. When a meeting's recorded, I'm like, is it okay to be like talking about some of those things? Because then like. People that aren't supposed to hear about it could like watch the record like, oh.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's all open meeting or it's all open record, so any of those, any of those emails can are corable. I can just kind of do it, oh, like high level, because you're talking about the LaFunt site, right?
Yes.
Right, yeah, I can do just do a high level, there's been some interest in the LaFunt site on Manitou Avenue. What was priorly the LaFunt Hotel. And from, from affordable housing developers, I think that right now, it also has sparked. Some, it sounds like it sparked some movement on the property owner's side too, to look into further about actually developing that lot. Would be fantastic, especially for affordable housing. There are definitely. There are definitely some things that need to be worked through in terms of financing for that type of thing and cost of property, everything like that, not gonna go too far into that, but. Those conversations are happening and there's been a couple of different ones thus far, so. That's something that it sounds like things are happening, things are percolating a little bit there, which is really cool to hear. Nothing solid has happened yet that I'm aware of.
Yes, thank you. And so that's, I think, because of that. Kiwanis meeting with. Do you remember his name? Let's see. What was that guy's name?
One of my prior emails to you, I think I sent out. Nancy's notes from that meeting too, if anyone wants to pull it up, I just have a harder time pulling it up on my end.
Okay. So, yeah, so. Anyway, whatever his name is, gosh darn it, let me see. Oh, it's, I think it's Toby.
Yeah, I think you're.
Yeah, his name is. What is his last name? Toby Gannett. So he's a, so for Barb and Amy, he's. Like a developer. That develops some really cool. Mixed use, mixed age demographic sort of in that like. What is that neighborhood considered that sits? What is it? South of downtown. It has a name, what is, anyone think of Colorado Springs, kind of by America the Beautiful and.
Ganejos? The old Ganejos?
Maybe, is that what that?
Are you about Mill Street?
Mill Street, I think, yeah. I think that's where that housing development is that he's developed.
There isn't, the only like housing development in Mill Street has been the not affordable housing apartment complex or the.
Yeah, I don't think it's Mill Street, I think it is east of Nevada.
Okay, is that where it is?
Sort of like the Shucks Run, is that the area, Ethan?
Oh, yeah, that might be it, sorry y'all.
No worries. There has been some, from what I remember, there has been some. Smaller multifamily being done in that area, I think near Shucks Run, so that very likely could be.
Yeah. So anyway, he spoke to. He spoke at Kiwanis, they just have Kiwanis Springs, different people. In, and they've sort of had this, which is really interesting, sort of this affordable housing. Platform where they had. Toby and then they had Jill. Because she was talking about that Pike Speak Housing. Network that Colorado Springs has related to. Affordable housing. And I think it really, I think. People there who are leaders in our community really did grasp onto it that it can be achievable, so that's. What I most appreciated was that. His. Did I lose this? No. Sorry, too many screens, I'm gonna stop sharing because I've got to just pull that off there. Yeah, I think that it. It got like people thinking different because it was someone that. Like came with. You know, actual. I don't know. Whatever, like, didn't you feel like Crystal, like the way he was presenting?
He is very adept at talking. And. And I'm, I'm being conscientious because this is a recorded meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, he very much did a good job of selling himself and his. Company and getting people excited about the potential of creating some housing here.
Yes. Yeah, and his, his father-in-law, I think, used to own the Barker House, so there was some like. I don't know if it would be love, but some connection, like they felt like, like he. He indicated that like Manitou is sort of at his heart and he would hope that. You know, Manitou would be willing to embrace. Increasing affordability and he understands that like land. Limitations would be an issue. And that the LaFunt would be definitely a opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, and I feel like that's probably one of the best properties, like, that you could. That a builder, a developer could come in and potentially like. Have enough space to do some, you know, taller buildings to make it more dense. And it's also like. The bus goes right by there, so I would imagine like that also goes in with the. The new state legislation about decreasing parking requirements. On transportation routes.
And that's something that law goes into effect, there's a couple of them that go into effect, that, those are going into effect next year. And there's another one that actually. Don't quote me, but I believe almost eliminates parking requirements across the board.
Wow.
There's, there are some stipulations in it from what I was reading about like affordable housing, like. Finance, finance agreements and things like that that may require some parking that are exempt from that law, but it's pretty significantly. Eliminates most parking requirements across the state. And so for residential uses, so that's something just to keep in mind and keep in your back pocket. In the conversations and regarding LaFunt site, I think something that we have already identified even when Hannah was here. Was that likely developers will need some type of variance to our height requirements here in the city. And then potentially to density. And so we'll, we'll see when something comes a little more solid, but excited and hoping that it does.
And I was, I'm been looking for it, but I can't find it, so I'm hoping Ethan, you probably already have it on your calendar and all the fun stuff, but. I thought it was Dola, but I'm not finding it, there's going to be listening sessions around the state. That looked like it was creating affordable housing. And there's gonna be one in, I think Colorado Springs in August. And it's like a nine AM to three PM, like it's a full day.
So if you can find that, could you send that to me? Because yeah, I haven't seen it yet, so that'd be awesome.
Yeah, you, I don't know, I can put it in the chat, because Crystal, I did sign up and I think it would be great if other people would go.
Yeah, and I think I have permission to. I need to double check because housing is not my role at the city, but I'm hoping to be able to sneak in to go. You know, and learn and hopefully be helpful to our housing advisory board. And sneak in, but be able to go.
Totally, we will likely need to notice that meeting as something that could potentially have a quorum of our board members, which is fine, we have that. We have that process down now for that notice, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just in case there's a quorum, we just need to notify that this is a public meeting at this address and there potentially may be a quorum of the board. So just before, before it happens, try and remind me just in case I don't have that on my radar, just to make sure, we just have to post it 24 hours in advance.
Okay. Okay. Let me see if I can find, is this, no, it's not it. Trying to see if I can find this, oh, to see if you could see, you guys could see this. Do y'all see it?
Yep.
So this is what. If you guys want to just. You know. Have it in your. Mind that it is, this is the day. And then I'll send it out, but it sounds really. Pertinent to the work that we're doing. And getting. You know. Addressing affordable housing and then I thought it talked about, oh yes, it talks about like there's a panel on. Prop one, two, three, and then affordable rental and ownership, so yeah, I think it can be. A good opportunity and then I noticed there was like a, there's like the Colorado Springs one and then there was like just another day that might just be online, so.
Yes, yeah, there's, I do remember that as well.
Crystal, there's at least one panel there that you could try and leverage and say is part of your position.
Right, I know, yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, so that's August, so yeah, so. Sort of back to where I was going, I was ass, asking if because. The summer months, I think again, I think it's gonna be difficult for Aaliyah to be. Available because she's got a lot of things going on, I do as well, I'm sure many of you do, and I know we need, I know it's important to meet, but it might just be a good time that. Individually, we can all be continuing to do things. And keep Ethan sort of. You know, not like we're gonna bug you too much, but like, you know, like. We're all, we could all sort of still be doing things, like. I imagine Amy, unless she wants a break, we could tell the. You know, bulletin that we're taking a summer break, or if Amy wants to continue writing things through. The July and August month that we're not having a meeting, that's, you know, that's great, we could talk about. Some of the articles, I know you have one that we put on the side burner, we could talk a little bit about that and then. You know, some of these meetings, I was on that list. That Excel sheet, one thing that like if somebody wanted to try to keep hounding. What was her name? Todd's, Todd and. Whoever came and spoke to us from Dola.
Oh.
What was it?
The Ida, our rep, our area rep, no, okay.
And she. That woman, I can't remember her name right now, she has been promoted and so there is a new area rep.
Oh, and maybe that's what you just said, Ethan.
It's Erin McNabb.
What?
Yeah. Erin is the new.
Erin McNabb, wow. All right, so. What Erin, what we could get from Erin, Crystal, maybe you could help.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, like.
What we need is we needed that FAQ because when I met, I did meet with the URA, I know I'm jumping all over the place. But when I, and I was gonna use the. Our little. That Excel spreadsheet to sort of be bulleting some of these things, but. When I met with the URA, they said that they have people that come and have interest in. Opportunities within the URA and he said, then they had said, I wish that you had a, like an FAQ of funding opportunities that we could give people. And that was something that we had asked. The other rep. And clearly she's left the position, so maybe that's why it didn't happen.
Yeah.
So like, I was just trying to think of some of the things that we could be sort of working on. While we're not having. A meeting. Those two months, like just individually, we could have some tasks. And then be ready to like resume. You know, whether it's in person or teams, I don't know if anyone has a preference.
Well, I wondered about, I felt like last year, when, I think it was last fall, I don't remember if it was September, October, that we had. The half-day retreat. Of maybe, if there's some tasks that we can each do and then have that kind of. Retreat style meeting to really dig into. This is what we've learned about these things and here is. What, you know, staff is ready and wanting to do and how do we support them?
Yeah, that sounds like something great, Amy, what do you think?
Unmute, um, no, I think that sounds good, my, my kind of role just repeats, rinse and repeat, rinse and repeat, so I'm just gonna keep doing that.
I feel like you're the hardest worker.
I know.
For real, like you're always doing something, so thank you.
It's six hundred words a month, but, um. It's a.
Right?
No, I like, I did go a little hard, I think I was like researching. Some policy that really I attached myself to, so I went a little hardcore on the last article and then. I emailed Allison, I was like, I'm gonna let that marinate and took it a little light and did like inclusivity. And honor and pride in Juneteenth, and so that's cool. I'll just keep plugging away at that, I think it would be helpful, Allison, if maybe you could talk to Aaliyah or you could talk to Michael and just like highlight. Then, you know, make sure everything has a name beside it so that everybody knows. What they're doing and then Ethan could distribute that out. I also, I don't know if we're on new business but or old, this is kind of both, but I did reach out to CSU. About the EEP and I told. It was to Alex. Treffay and then I said that. That we aligned with their. You know, incentives and could they provide data, so he forwarded me along to some other people. Still waiting, but that ball is rolling, so I'll just kind of continue there and continue with the. Article, but I would say like, if you come across individually, something that you think like, oh, you know, this might be a really good article. Like jumping off point, or I went to such and such webinar. And they were really saying XYZ, that's always really helpful to me. Like I just looked at this report, it's a. Atlas report. It was a study from Berkeley in Cali, in California, but it was about. Zoning and, oh, a California zoning atlas report. I'm just talking about single, single use and in some of these like variances, what you were talking about Ethan, as far as like. Changing density or changing. Levels and height restrictions and stuff like that, so I'm always looking at stuff like that to kind of spark off. Ideas and stuff, because I do think that, I will say like. As. We'll say as harsh, like so without having read it, Crystal and Barb, it was just a little bit like. Why are we even debating human rights? Like we should just be debating policy, not human rights and ethics, like we're getting the two mixed up, you know? But I went a little hard, but that is me, you know, I will always. And US might after rein me back in, but I didn't come on here to just like always talk about community and holding hands and pie baking contests and. You know, seriously though, like I. I do want to utilize in the best way that is best for the whole habit, it's not just my voice in that paper, but I do think we need to. Carefully choose what we say, but also we need to say it something, not just. Yeah, you know, the, not just the bare minimum and. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, right, Amy, I thought it was awesome, I felt like. Was there other?
Well, rereading it, you know, I always like, I was probably like really angry and then I was like, whoa, like one of the adjectives was morose realizations of like blah, 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 and so then I was like, okay. It's fine, that's how I am and I'll take it down and take it down, I feel bad because what happened is Rhonda was like, hey, I don't have anybody, can you get me something by Monday? And I was probably like on a. Rant.
Yeah.
And then I sent it to Allison and she's trying to like help me edit it.
Oh.
With her phone and then I reread it the next day, I was like, damn, calm down, girl, so. Then I had just gone to Pride, so I was like, I'm just gonna write about Pride and I'm gonna let that marinate and then we will, you know, because it was really good month anyway.
Yeah.
But I do want to have some like, I did kind of think about like. Citing various reports and maybe doing some kind of. Oh, you know what was really good, Ethan, was that did you know survey? That went out. And then I was like, so I took the survey as a resident, so the city sent out a did you know survey and it's like this new monthly thing that they're doing. I'll let you speak on it.
Update.
Yeah, and it was really good information, but then once I took the survey, it disappeared and I couldn't see the did you know anymore. And I was like, oh, where is that data? Like I want to, because it was saying some beautiful things like, did you know that forty, I'm making this part up, okay? Blah, blah, blah percent. Manitou is blah, 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 population and you know, I didn't have it memorized and so stuff like that. Ethan, if like Mitchell is building a deck or something like that. And it pertains to housing, absolutely, I would love that, because I do try to read the weekly report and stuff, but you know, I've got. A lot of things going on, so.
The weekly report. I don't think it's gonna have, like.
That had the link to the did you know, so.
Yes, okay, and if you send me an email about that, because we actually are having the Plan Manitou engagement process, one of the big things we're doing. Is within the weekly report. We have like a did you know, we're gonna have like surveys and things like short surveys to participate in to collect data for this Plan Manitou update. And so please also engage in them, please, that'd be amazing and then share them around as well, we're working with our. More than our consultants on those, so if you have any, as you're going through, if you have any questions or follow-ups or anything like that, absolutely email me. I'm the point of contact to help get a lot of those pushing and moving, so, yeah, go ahead and reach out to me. Um, I'm the point of contact to help get a lot of those push in and move in. So um, yeah, go ahead and reach out to me.
Would that be a good like article to lift up the the Plan Manitu and getting people like about the surveys and you know, where to sign up to get the the emails and things like that, like
I think Mitchell is already doing that. I definitely, I definitely am pretty sure that he is in another column with them. So I know that we are definitely hitting on that.
Yeah, no.
And I do try to punch up any kind of like obvious connections to the have, but I could always use. I never know what's gonna spark like that, the morose realization was gonna TikTok like.
One of the things that will be coming out. It should be soon. I don't know for sure, but um usually the point in time counts will come out.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and so there is the ability to talk about the point in time count will be coming, which is it is what it is, um, which is just a one night in January, but it gives us a temperature gauge on homelessness in our community. But also, and I don't know, it might already be out, the National National Low Income Housing Coalition does these amazing surveys and they use, my memory says it, it usually comes in June or July for each year to say how like they do the math to figure out how much it is that a community needs to make per hour. And then, you know, to afford the median two bedroom. And like how, it's a fantastic report. It won't drill down to Manitu Springs. But it does cover El Paso County and like it drills down to county and then large cities. So we'll have those numbers for El Paso County and for for the Springs. And so like that might be, it might be an interesting thing to like talk about the continuum of homelessness, housing instability, um affordable rentals, affordable housing and how that like property ownership tends to leave tends to lead people into the breaking of a poverty cycle.
Yeah.
Just an idea.
And if you ever are like on a list or an email newsletter or um like I just shared the weekly report with somebody at the chamber. So feel free to be like, Amy, I think this is a list you should be on.
Okay.
So then you're not like forwarding me stuff all the time, you know, and that goes for anybody, just send me and then I'll decide if it can make it out of the jump.
Yeah.
And I get, I get weekly and monthly emails from the American Planning Association. Over housing, so I'll forward this to you because you have to be a member to receive them, but I'll forward them to you.
Yeah, because I do think like it's one thing to write eloquent, morose adjectives and blah, 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 but to back it up with data is, you know, that's what, that's the name of the game. That's what we're doing. Because we want to put out facts and information. I saw my name on that sheet and it said information. So I want to back up my opinions with information.
Yeah, of course.
Factual information.
And you know, being able to go, you know, here is the story of one person and this probably represents thirty percent of our community. Things like that, so we can do the combination of data with.
Yeah, that storytelling, yeah.
Yeah. Awesome.
So a long way to say, I'm happy to continue that through the summer. If you guys just send me emails and stuff, but I do think um like kind of a spreadsheet, even if we send it B C C um highlighted names or whatever would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I feel like I have not done anything and there's probably lots of things I was supposed to do, but I don't remember what they were, because I haven't seen the list.
I know, and I felt like Crystal, it was more like what exactly what you're saying was like sending out the like links and giving a sort of other, other training. So I mean, I think you've been doing it. It's just, yeah, I just think we've like, we just need a little reset, like a time to like re, and like, I wanna meet with the new planning director. You know, said hello on an email, but Ethan, I haven't met with him and I would just like to hear maybe a little bit more about have a sit down and like sort of just see what like you know, I imagine that the um the, the workload is the same. It's not like Hannah left and like things have changed and there's a bunch of time, because I know um just when I connected with Denise, just briefly Hal, Ms. Hal our city administrator, she just said, yeah, we, you know, we do have a lot going on and you know, she would support us sort of taking a little summer break so that they, so that planning can also have time to you know, have just get their kind of things in aligned and then we could meet and figure out like, yeah, are there things we can help you or is do you want us to continue just working on the prop one, two, three opportunities and you know? What does that look like? So that's what I was thinking, but I think having the, like you said, in September, having like maybe a half day again. Would be really good because it gets us back in this like, you know, what we talked about, we've sort of fallen off. We had such a great meeting. Remember we had that awesome meeting?
Yeah, like
Hannah had made like the room like Ethan, how I want it to be if we meet in person, he, a perfect little square. And we all could like see each other more. And it was our most Hannah, well, haven't Hannah even said it was our most effective meeting. Because we had like agenda and we have like, we're getting things done and again, I just think we've, I've been gone and Aaliyah's been pitch hitting and you know.
Yeah, it's been pretty
Just getting us back on a good thoughtful mission. And maybe we'll, maybe we can again, still work, keep recruiting people.
Absolutely, yeah. Send me when you're ready. Um, and that can also be part of the conversation with Fred too, when you guys meet. Is what that, what that needs to look like, what we aspire for that to look like, and we can make that happen. So.
Okay. Alright. Good. So I don't know, do you want me to pull? So Amy's got her tasks. Amy said she's gonna continue this, looking at C S U and how it aligns with our like incentive. She's gonna be doing the articles.
And also really quick on the C S U part, um, I spaced earlier. Um, the Energy Efficiency Rebate Page is up to date with all the um, what was approved by the committee. Um, also, uh, I was just at a historic housing tax credit workshop um, with the H P C board as well, or with the uh, Susan from the H P C board. And so we got a bunch of new information on how to access um, historic uh, or tax credits for upgrade, um, for upgrades and maintenance of your historic home. And so I think kind of something the H P C is looking at some point in the near future is um, working with us to do a here's how you can help support, making sure that you're in alignment with our historic regulations and requirements throughout the city. Um, and like tax credits actually take it even a level above what the city requires for historic review. So um, that will be really good. And I think that's potential opportunity for um, you all to partner on also here's the Energy Efficiency Rebate Program that can benefit you in this moment. Um, as you're going through this process and everything as well too. So that could be a good one.
That's a great one.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I don't know if this is the right place to interject it, but I did attend virtually the uh Kono, the Council of Neighborhood Organizations luncheon. And um, unfortunately the sound is a little bit garbled, so I, I could hear the person directly speaking and presenting, but I couldn't always hear the dialogue between people at the table who, who really were eating lunch. And uh so, and there weren't very many. It was just, you know, five or six people. Nobody was from an official government endorsed board of any kind or a five oh one C three. These were sort of loosely affiliated neighborhood groups. I'm not even sure to what extent they were housing uh, HOAs. But so, so a lot of the discussion really kind of didn't pertain to us. But I'm gonna look at my notes here. And um the reasons it didn't pertain to us is that we're just much more structured. You know, we have an or usually, we have, have an agenda. Shine laws, we, all of that, you know, we're and this, these groups don't do any of that. But I thought one thing was kind of interesting. They said the title of calling somebody a board can give the false sense of power. Like you have decision-making ability. And I thought, well, that's true. We, we don't have the capacity to tell city council, do this. And so it's good to remember one's role. And the other thing that kind of ties into being consistent with the role, no matter what kind of a group you're with is that there should be some kind of fiscal tracking, fiduciary checks and balances. And of course, you know, we don't have to worry about meeting IRS stuff because the city's gonna take care of being sure we're doing a lot of that. Loyalty to the mission uh, and disclosing any conflict of interest, being professional and following all pertinent laws and regulations, which I, I think we do all of that.
Yeah.
If you are on certain kinds of boards, it's good to have some kind of like umbrella uh, insurance for liability. I don't know that that applies to a city board or advisory board so much.
And we have it covers all city related activities.
Yeah, I know when I was on a property owner's uh, board for some property that I owned, uh, that was one thing I was glad to know I had. We were making some decisions about water distribution and well use and stuff like that. And uh so that's it. I don't know, if they have another meeting, I would say get the agenda first before you decide whether it's really worth your time, because I don't think they were they just had nowhere near the basic sophistication that this group has.
Okay. I had asked Barb, I had saw, seen that the Council on Neighborhood and Organizations, is that what Kono stands for? Was hosting like a how to be affect, how to be an effective board and committee member. And I was like, oh my God, that would be great. Find out how we can be effective now.
We could have presented.
Okay, oh, wow.
And I will say, Kono is definitely in some big transitions right now. Um, I believe that they have a new director or interim. Um, in the process of hiring, I think they're in the process, they have an interim right now. Um, I think that they're like assistant director or like kind of second charge is also phasing out too. So there are quite a few things um, going on in Kono. Yes, a lot of transition.
Yeah, so anyway, thank you Barb for going. It was sort of last minute, so I appreciate you. Again, ending on a, yeah, Barb was always like, sure, I'll, you know, I'll go, I'll help. So I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, I, I do think from having the three years on the board, to me some of the most effective stuff was around when we did the building code stuff. It was really focused. And I think we, I think we got a little uh, stuck in the water when city council really didn't like the A D U um, concepts, because that was a part of what we were, had spent a lot of time on.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I still think that's an area to revisit less as a, less a separate ADUs on properties, but maybe how people might rework existing homes to provide for you know, a, a little bit of flexibility for their own family, for bringing in grandparents or children coming in, whatever. And um, and I, I love the idea of increasing a little bit of density. And you know, the fun, you could have a kind of a mix, you could have a little coffee shop bar at the bottom and people living up top, it's probably mixed commercial use, so there's a lot of stuff that can happen.
Yeah.
I wish you will.
Fun fact I just wanna share here too, is I was kind of talking about some legislative items um, that had come up in this session. Um, so referring back to Senate Bill two thirteen um, last year, which did not pass through legislature, which included a lot of those ADUs, parking, a whole, it was a plethora of things. Um, what the legislature did this year is split all of that up into individual bills to include, like I was talking about parking requirements earlier. Also, um, a bill passed uh, for allowing um, addressing restrictions on family and un um, and unrelated individuals, how many can be within a home. Um, it it definitely kind of blew that one out of the water as well too, for a lot of municipalities, all going into effect this next July, I believe. And then the other big one is ADUs. So a bill passed state and was signed um, to allow ADUs in all residential zones um, that allow for single family residential. And so that's something we're gonna get a lot more guidance on from the state, um, and what that will mean for the city, but that is something within the next year horizon. Um, that our code will need to accommodate in some way, shape or form.
And that's interesting, because wasn't there a, didn't city council like vote? Vote like that they weren't gonna support that or was that? But that, but then it's, are you saying that it's still like passed?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Yeah, and I like, it's interesting, I look through it and it did you know, it's sort of like one of those things like I was kind of hesitant as well, because I felt like it was written for a much larger community. So to me, as a, a man to resident, I did agree with council because I felt like the way it was written, I, it worried me. Could it mess with our community? Again, you know, like we have to think about it, like as much as I'm pro accessory dwelling unit opportunities. The way it was written, it worried me.
It's gonna be going into the rulemaking process and I think that's gonna shed quite a bit of light. Its full impact. Um, I think that something just from my experience in ministry thus far. Um, and we'll see what happens when the rules come out and how it impacts us. I think the biggest thing is that in order for um, planning to approve any type of building permit um, within Manitu, you have to be what's considered a wholly plotted lot, meaning that you're lot one of block five of this subdivision. And I will say it's seven to eight times out of ten that I'm working with a property in Manitu, they're not wholly plotted. Um, meaning that they've, there are portions of lots or they sold off a portion of their lot or something like that's, that's a pretty big um, hindrance, because you either have to, we have a couple of applications that you can pursue. But they're a little cumbersome in order to rectify that and you still have requirements you have to meet in order to even go through with those applications. So um, it will be interesting to see.
Yeah. Okay.
Ethan, could, would you mind explaining that just a little more? People have lots where they've sold off part of, I mean, can I sell off part of my lot? I've got like unbuiltable part behind my house down into the canyon. Can I sell that off?
So it is um, what we consider an illegal subdivision according to municipal code. Um, is how they refer to it, but technically you can go to the El Paso County Assessor and Clerk and Recorder's Office. Um, and you can say, I want to basically change the imaginative lot lines, not the ones obviously exist there, um, in order to create a second tax schedule number, and then I'm gonna sell off that chunk. So if you sold off the eastern two feet of your property, your legal description would now say lot five blocks so and so of this subdivision, except for the eastern two feet. And so, and once that is triggered, that's when you're considered um, not a wholly plotted lot. Um, if you come into planning uh, and say, hey, I'm wanting to subdivide my lot, meaning that we will go through the subdivision process identifying that the lots you're creating um, are of the required size. Also that it is a buildable lot that you're creating and you're not just creating an unbuiltable lot that can't be used. Then you can do the official process, but yeah, you can, you can go to the El Paso County Assessor. Um, and you can technically separate part of your lot and sell it off.
Wow.
Well, who would buy that?
Good question.
If it's unbuiltable and
Probably somebody who thinks
So we have a lot of properties that are like that in Manitu evidently. And is that just something that's happened over a long period of time? And is that just something that's happened over a long period of time or?
We have a handful. I think what I see most commonly is that neighbors have sold land to neighbors. That's a big one. Or, or in prior years where some things may not have necessarily been enforced or practiced or potentially not even necessarily in code. Then they created a second or third separate dwelling unit. And then they sold off and subdivided. So there's already a dwelling unit on that site that under the original configuration of the law may have allowed it, but the current configuration of the law is too small to allow one. It's already built. So it's what we call legal law conforming. And so, yeah, it's a whole, it's a whole fun, messy process. If you're ever interested, Barb, come talk to me.
So Ethan, one of the, my understanding is one of the legislation changes is that every municipality now has to conduct a a housing assessment?
There, I did see that one. I haven't seen it since it was passed yet. So I'll definitely need to look into it. And if you see anything before that, Crystal, let me know. I think that from what I recall from that one, if it passed, it talked about being able to do it on a what's the term they use? A, like the Pike's Peak Council of Governments level. To conduct one on that level across many municipalities under one, I forget what they refer to it as, but under one.
Like regional?
Yeah.
Yeah, but don't, I thought we already had to do a regional one for Prop one, two, three. Yeah, this one I feel like is a little bit more intense than the Prop one, two, three one.
Okay.
Because my understanding is Prop one, two, three kind of did their, they had some numbers already and that communities could then say, no, we don't think that your number is right. We're going to give you what our number is. And this is why, like, this is our housing assessment. But the legislation, of course, it's unfunded, which is always irritating thing whenever they pass unfunded mandates that communities have to, like a housing assessment's a huge cost and time. So yeah, I was just curious about what that is doing to our city of going, okay, you have to have this. And I hope you're right that we can do it with like for El Paso County or something, you know?
Yeah, definitely. If you, Crystal, have you seen anything? If you can send it my way, that'd be so. I just sent kind of a slew of bills to Fred for him to look at.
There was a lot.
There was a lot. It's because, I mean, I think splitting up Senate Bill two thirteen from last year was the big part of that is they did individual bills for individual items. And so that was
Yeah. Wow. Well, there's some topics to to look into for sure. On how that can I don't know, help, help, either help or hinder. Hopefully it's help more helpful that some of the, the efforts, but like Barb said, like that, like in the ADU conversation, like allowing like reconfiguration of an existing house is something that I think could work really well for Manitou, like you know, like Barb said, like sort of her house or you know, so she could age in place, but also have some renters, maybe in the bigger part of the house or still has her landing pads when she's coming back. But but that's what I think. That's what Jill Gabler, when she came and spoke to the Kiwanis on the Pike's Peak Housing Network, she was advocating a lot about accessory dwelling units for that reason, for like allowing, you know, people to age in place or have a place that, you know, a, a recent college student, you doesn't have to live with mom and dad, but could have be in the side yard while they're figuring out their next step or.
Or for instance, it's like, there's a process, Carter Springs actually has this called an accessory family suite. Is not restricted to number of units on a lot. In essence, it's allowing you to create a second kitchen. Their process requires an internal connection of sorts, whether that be stairway, anything situated there. Most of the time you see it in basements over there, but you can technically add on to your home. And so it allows a second kitchen within the dwelling unit without creating a separate dwelling.
I think that's something that would really go over.
Yeah.
Just putting the word family in there.
Yes.
It's going to disarm you, you know, all the naysayers. And it really, that might be a really interesting thing for the board to explore, just what that is with Colorado Springs.
Yeah.
And then you could write about it in the bulletin.
Yeah, go ahead, Barb. What were you going to say?
I said, and then you could write about it in the bulletin.
It's true. Because Ethan, was it something that had to go through council that they decided on that or?
Yep, it was part of their ADU ordinance that established integrated and detached ADUs. So integrated in essence is creating a duplex with a size restriction on one of the units. In essence, it's a complicated process. Not many people do the integrated ADU over there. But the Assessor Family Suite was the third option that was part of that process, which Hannah actually was a major hitter in that ADU process. So she had her that one. But Lana Thielen is another one who's there now Parks Development Manager. She also is very involved in that too. So that's something that we can always, we can always connect with them and get more information on as well. But even in my time at Carter Springs, I had a ton of, what we call them AFSs, accessory family suites. Because it was just done through the building permit process. It wasn't even an entitlement level process. And so it was just through building permit, as long as you met the required parameters that were outlined. So it's definitely interesting.
That's cool. Barb, like you said, they might like that. That word, I mean, even if, yeah, like that it's designed to help, you know, to help within the family. And then maybe it wouldn't necessarily add the worries of additional, I don't know, people, I guess. You're just sort of separating people.
Yeah, because over there.
No reference.
Yep.
Yeah, because especially obviously the new legislation about unrelated people and related people and kind of changing that up quite a bit. Obviously that would have an impact on it. But Carter Springs process still says maximum of unrelated people, unless it's family by blood, marriage, so on and so forth. But adoption, but yeah, so it's still restricted and just
Got it. All right. Wow. I have got a lot of notes all over. I guess we just need to think about like, yeah, like Crystal, or there, is there anything like as we were talking that you feel like over July and August, you have interest in focusing? I think we talked about maybe the FAQs through.
Yeah, I can reach out to Erin about the FAQs. Absolutely. I am, I'm hoping to attend that meeting in August. But I'm also, if it's helpful, I'm happy to look into more about the that legislation around the housing needs assessment for municipalities. If that's helpful.
Yeah, that would be great.
Because I feel like that's going to have a huge impact.
Yes. I could be very wrong. Okay. But I swear, we were talking about, there was some, it, maybe it's Plan Manitou, Ethan, that there's already going to be in housing assessment in our area and that we should piggyback off of that for some of our.
I think that that is from what I recall, I think it was related to the like Council of Governments.
Okay.
Or the county, maybe the county was looking at something.
You know, if we had it, it would be on that spreadsheet, Allison. So maybe just keep an eye out.
What does it say? Or what were you thinking it's was?
We were saying like a housing needs assessment or survey, like some kind of assessment or survey is going to have to be done.
When I met with Jill this spring, she was talking about doing a housing
I think that's what it was.
From El Paso County.
Yeah, I think that's what it was. And we were saying, how can we piggyback off of them?
Yeah. And she thought
Of the data, yeah.
Be specific to Manitou, but it would be inclusive of Manitou. I think there's some stuff going on behind the scenes. And so I don't know if it's really going to end up being El Paso County or each the city now, because one of the things that I remember about the housing needs assessment, and this could be normal, like I'm really new to this. But that they you have to look at the incomes of the people who are living in your community. And then what, what is available to everybody in that income spectrum? And so like, that's a lot of data that is hard to get city specific. And so, yeah, I have lots of questions around
Yeah.
what that is, especially when it's an unfunded mandate, saying that every municipality has to do it. But there's not, there's not funding to assist with it that I know of anyway.
Yeah.
So yeah, I'm more than happy to try and dig in and
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Because I mean, it's intrusive or like a heavy lift that is like that data is would be amazing to have.
Yeah.
There's no doubt about that, right? Like specifically to the population income, because you know, many of us on this board know that, you know, you don't, there are no jobs that can meet those requirements or housing. And yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and for those of us who are retired, it's not necessarily income, it's investments. And those things aren't going to be picked up on. You know, asking what your income is. You could have somebody that's kind of low income, but actually has a fair bit, you know, stocked away in retirement funds of one kind or another, or inheritance.
Yeah.
I never even thought of that, Barb.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be in your tax? They would have to report that in taxes?
No, you don't. You report like for me, I report my pension. And but I don't need to report what's in a portfolio that I'm not taking out.
Well, but I guess if you're not taking it out, you're not getting income from it.
Well, but you have some investments like a Roth where you already paid the taxes on, so you can take that out. That doesn't show up. A lot of inheritance, things don't show up. So unless you're, you're receiving taxable income, you, you're not, it's not going to show up on tax returns. I mean, I don't know how they figure out what a community earns. I have no idea, but I don't think it's as easy to figure out on a micro level.
It's complex, for sure.
Yeah, that's why, you know, tax law is kind of complex.
Yeah. Well, I think you hit the nail on the head. It is really hard to get that data. You know, like
And it how, and be accurate.
Right. Like household data is very difficult to get. And then throwing the money in there makes it even more difficult to identify. So, yeah, it's a big, like that, it's a it's a big concern. Like, it's really good, but just knowing how much time and money that kind of assessment cost is is a bind.
For sure.
Yeah. I mean, I think you could look, you could probably get some idea of housing averages in terms of value by, you know, looking at what's been sold over the last year and taking off the top four or five and the lowest four or five, and then creating a, an average. And with that, you can there is something that refers to what would be equivalent rental. If you were renting that instead of being a homeowner, you, you could kind of get some rough ideas of what it costs to live in Manitou, including rental, not just owning.
Yeah.
And, and, and owning, you know, housing ownership is not necessarily the route to wealth that it once was either. At this point in time, it's probably maybe a better financial situation for people to rent and wait a little while and you know, invest that money some other way or whatever. I, I think things are really changing and all the way around until supply catches up with the demand for housing.
Yeah. True. It's very true. All right. So Barb, see, we're going to miss you. We're going to miss all your
Well, I'm always good for opinions and thoughts, but that doesn't mean I'm doing, really doing much.
But you get us, you get us to be thinking about things like that. It's so true. Like you're right, like homeownership. Yeah, maybe that isn't the thing. It is the rentals and, but that's where maybe that accessory family suite or the ADUs can offer more affordable opportunities for people that are just want to be part of the community, even if it's a tiny little space, right?
Yeah. And, and actually, Public Radio had a thing on Mark, the Marketplace Report. I don't know if any of you have listened to that, but I just heard that yesterday and that was their focus is that homeownership has in the past been sort of the ideal, it's sort of the American dream. And it may not actually even be financially inappropriate. Most effective way to build wealth right now, given, it's not bad, but it may not be the best for a lot of people. And so that shouldn't necessarily be the holy grail that one's going for. But having a place to live is definitely an important grail to go for.
Definitely. Yeah. Yep. The basic human right, right?
Yeah, I wish, wish we would sign off on that.
Yeah. So I thought it was cool. This is like a complete side note, but that the bulletin will run those like homeless union articles and opportunities. That's kind of cool. So anyway. What were you going to say, Ethan?
Also, I say before we hop off today, if I could get you all to, when you have a moment, go to our Plan Manitou webpage. So you have access to that. You can share it and you can interact with it. It's going to be Manitou Springs C O, as in Colorado.gov, our normal city website, backslash Plan Manitou. Or you can just Google Plan Manitou as well. It'll be the first thing that pops up. But I can give you, I can share my screen really quick just to show you what the webpage is looking like right now. And different opportunities for engagement with it. So guys, I want you guys to absolutely have the opportunity. Let me share my planet. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
So just kind of an overview and goals of the project. Expected timelines for the project as well. Kind of our plan, how to engage with our Plan Manitou one oh one and the new questions of the week. So right now we're on the week one, our topic of the week question, how to engage within that. Upcoming opportunities to participate. Again, weekly report newsletter. But I will be at the pop up booth at the ice cream social and pie baking contest on July 1st, as well as a pop up booth at the Day of Friendship on July 27th. We also have online surveys going out through all of July and August. We have to do, what else do we got going on? Our working groups are on roundtable, but then on July 30th, Tuesday, July 30th, we have a community priorities workshop. So this is an open public house or a public open house. And so we want anyone and everyone in the community to come on out, learn about the project with our consultants. And also engage in the data that we've already collected through working groups, through research, through these surveys. And our, our consultants are starting to compile those priorities and things like that together. And so we would love for you all to be engaged in that as much as possible and to share with your friends and family and community members as well. How to get in touch with us. And then also related documents that have been adopted in the process as well. So you can access currently our public engagement plan and our current plan assessment. Soon to come, the community profile and story map, which are really cool. They're ArcGIS based. So it's very fun and interesting to play with those and see what they have to offer. So as well as our comprehensive planning history. So definitely go check out the website.
Very cool.
So Ethan, this was the one I took, the question of the week. So did you want me to email you and say like after, so after you submit the survey, then you can't really go back and look at the, did you know again? Or can you? Is that what you wanted me to say?
Yes, if you can send that to me, because I'll check in. Yes, if you can send that to me, cause I'll check in with Mitch slash the consultants um to see.
But now it's letting me, but I wonder, cause I used it on the computer downstairs. I did it on the computer downstairs. So I'm wondering if it just like knows the IP address and it won't let you, I'll put something in there.
I'll say if you can, if if it happens again, if you can let me know, like send any screenshots or anything like that. Um, that'd be perfect. So we can try and mitigate that for others. Um, but I'm glad that you can see it now.
Okay. I'll I'll see my, if my husband can do it on his computer. We'll do it three, three tests.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, we are like nearing a thing. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll follow up with Michael on a phone call and ask him if he has like that Q one or maybe Aleah has it. So that I can see like where, when we had agreed, we had actually put our names in. And then get that sent out. Um, but like I said, you and, yeah, Amy has some things, Crystal has some things. I mean, I'm gonna continue. I'll connect um Ethan with you and um Fred. And maybe Aleah could even join us to just, so we understand again where the city is and if, how we could help or if we should just be focusing on, you know, the energy efficiency and still the prop one, two, three. Like, you know, initiatives or if there's any other things that we could be focusing on and then everyone keep, you know, Amy's doing it every week in the article, but keep um reaching, you know, meeting people and saying, hey, come join our board. We'll be more organized. They need to know that we won't be org. But in September, you know, or after September, maybe, I don't know, doesn't matter. People can join us, but yes. So, um, two, just two quick things. It's Draper Commons. That's that project. And it says it's like east, um, it's uh, what's it say? Southeast edge of downtown. So it's um seniors and low, lower wage earners, two hundred and eighty units. And it's um it's expecting to house seniors and residents earning between fourteen and eighteen an hour in a mix of studios, one and two bedroom apartments that will rent from three seventy-five to ten twenty-five, so.
Well, yeah, it does. Um, south of East Fountain Boulevard at intersection with South Wasatch Avenue.
Okay. Yeah. So, anyway, look that up. Um, and yeah, thank you all, Barb. Again, thank you for your time and your service. I mean, especially when we were, yeah, like you said, when we were in that habitability, developing that document that you know, um, was adopted by the city, like that was a lot of work that time and, you know, like you said, um, even if it was an opinion, it was definitely helpful and brought into like us to consider things. I remember, remember when we sat around like back and forth about the sink in the bathroom or the sink in the hallway?
Yeah.
Like, just some of those things. Digging through like what Manitou could look like, so I so appreciate, you know, having you on the board and we'll miss you. And we wish you well.
I'll miss all of you and uh I may be back, but for right now, it's good for me to take a little break.
No, it is, it is. So, so I don't know, do I need to, Ethan, do we need to vote on anything about taking the summer off or we just say we're?
No, I think that it sounds like there's a general consensus and you as the chair can decide. Um.
Okay.
No.
Yeah. All right. So we're just, we're not gonna have an official meeting. Um, and I guess Ethan, if there's things that that we have maybe that you, then you could send them out to the group.
Absolutely.
You know, but we won't have a, we won't actually have a July and August meeting. And we'll have a Sep- the September, I think, uh, like a half day. You know, regroup, I think would be great. And we'll just have to figure out, you know, we'll start looking at our calendars and figuring out what could work again for the city and space and all that type of thing, so. Any questions before we log off? All right. Well, thank you all. I appreciate everyone's time and patience and.
Yeah, thank you, Barb.
We'll see you at, we'll see each other at like the Manitou events, all those. Day of Friendship.
I'm sure I'll run into you all.
So, yeah.
Good night.
Yes, the pool. All right, everyone. Good night. Thank you. Bye.